Time to go. This is a special call meeting to consider Mr. Riggs's proposal. And we will be in with him in minutes on this. Where's Mr. Riggs?
Right here.
We're meeting tonight just because you've asked us to.
I appreciate that.
You know, two, three years, three, four years ago, the zoning commission was approved. And it was approved for all the citizens of Hamilton. It was for the protection of the citizens of Hamilton. And you know that we have requested you to come two, three times to the meetings. And you fell as shut.
I didn't know about those requests.
Really?
That's right.
But, you know, this committee does not look favorable on someone deliberately violating their own appointments.
I didn't do that.
Okay. Bucked up. Does the committee have any questions?
What's the recommendation that he is proposing? Do we have clarification on that? Because I don't think the application that was filled out was filled out for the regular.
I believe on that case it was R1. And that was through discussions with Mr. Riggs and myself. And then upon further discussion, it looks like R3, I believe, is what he's requesting.
He's requesting R3. And right now it's on M1.
Is that true? We made a call. There are actually two parcels side by side. One of them is B2, general business, and the other is M1, heavy industry.
So, Mr. Riggs, we'd like to hear your proposal.
Well, you want me to stand up here?
Yes, sir.
But when it was, when this was approved, I had a subdivision drawn up. We got sixty lots over there. And I had a, when it was approved by the city before, a subdivision. And I didn't know that was resolved until I applied for a permit to finish the house. I had it started over there. Because when it was approved, I had a very threatened, my son-in-law Curtis Gillen would come down and visit the city. Because my wife was dying then of brain cancer. And so she died. And I really didn't want to do anything for a long time. And I did not know that it had been rezoned until I applied for a permit to start, to finish that house over there. And however they give that permit, and I found out there it had been rezoned industrial, I believe, before I was told. But it needed to be changed back to the subdivision that was approved before. And that's what I asked you to do, change it back to residential so I could develop. I've got a half a million dollars invested in it.
Wayne, is all of it been rezoned? Or just part of that?
All of it is rezoned. All of ours, Scott.
All subdivision is rezoned?
Right. There's two. One was the business and one was the live manufacturing.
Which one are you going to be changing?
All of it. All of it.
And that's how many acres?
How many acres?
Yes.
It's fifteen acres today. I've got, if you like to see this, I've got a flat plot of it. If you want to have one.
Mr. Riggs, Tim?
I think we saw one.
Okay.
Tim, I was concerned at our meeting, was part of that, you wanted to do the R3, but the other part you wanted to do the R1?
Yeah, that is the part next to the nursing home. I'm going to put modular homes on there for the rent. And they requested for me to do that. And the other, I'm going to build houses up.
Like your?
Like I planned to, Richard. Yeah.
And he has submitted plans with Tim.
I have got plans to tell them. So, the modular homes?
That's the modular home.
Wayne, did you ever perfect that plan in advance?
I didn't, but Barry Frederick did.
Did you say it went all over?
Yeah. Well, I, I, I paid on it too. Yeah. And it worked that way, too. I was cooking, building Milton Kaywood, talking, I had enough money to tell them that.
Is that in the flood zone?
Yeah.
Part of it is.
Part of it may be, but it's, that's a hundred-year flood zone. That's a hundred-year flood zone. But that may never happen. Right.
You know, we have certain procedures we have to go through to do this. We have to contact the joint and property owners to hear their thoughts on this. And we will do that. We will have to run this in the paper, if it so be. And we just, Wayne, we just recommend to the council what we think. And they make the decision to do this. So, our regular business meeting, bunch of business meetings, next Monday night. And we will try to contact these joint and property owners to hear what they have to say about this. And...
I'm not asking for anybody that wasn't approved before.
Before what?
Before this was born. Yeah. Because it was approved by the city on the previous administration, the subdivision one.
Can I say something? I don't want to get old.
Somebody could in, tell what was approved and what wasn't.
Yeah, I would, I would speak to that. I went back through the minutes and jam and different ones, went back through the minutes. We never approved a subdivision. According to Scott, it would not have been necessary at that time because we didn't have zoning. So, it was not approved by the council.
There were some components of a, of a house division that were approved, such as the roads and streets.
He had a plan, yes, that we looked at. I think there were some modifications that needed to be done to his plan. Yeah.
And did we approve it or not? Did you approve it or not?
Changes that we made on the original plan, the roads and some fire hydrants, we, you did submit that, and we did go in there and say, we needed the width of this road, some of the cul-de-sacs, the fire hydrants placed in different spots. And then it was presented back.
And we changed it.
It was changed, yes, sir. That was on the plans that you submitted.
Right.
Tim, you, you approved his plans?
No, we approved the width of the roads. We looked at it from the fire department standpoint on the width of the roads for fire hydrants. We suggested he make changes on the width of the roads, on the cul-de-sacs, and move in some fire hydrants. And I think we had it resold. And brought them back to Mr. Riggs, and he did. On the original plans, they were changed.
Very prepared, very well.
That is all that I had to do with the...
So, what he's got now, you're okay with? The drawings he's got now?
Yeah, with the plans that he submitted for the modular homes.
Well, that's not plans for the roads.
No, this, this is not plans for the roads.
But it's the same as what I approved before. The plans you've got right there, it's just, it's plans on the mod part of our house he got down there. Any plans right now? One or two? How many are you going to put down there right now? Well, I was going to put four, but I ran into this problem, so I cut it down to one. But I've got that one filled, and I've got people coming here from Twenty Third to fill it up. Eight people in that one house. I'm going to put them in a motel so we can do the same thing. Because they don't kill me.
Nathan, does he have to get engineering done on the driveways or the roof?
Yes, but you're talking about, did wait?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. I'll do the Milton Kaywood, yeah.
That's what he'll have to have now, will he, or will he not have to have those plans for what he's doing, proposing now?
That's, that's an issue for the council at this point. The dedication, acceptance of roadway improvements will be an issue for the council.
Right now, what you're doing down there is on the main, on Dr. Sasser Drive, right?
Yes.
So, it wouldn't require, it wouldn't require any special roadwork or anything else?
As long as the lots that are developed have access to the street, and as long as the utility company and the council are in a position to accept the improvements that are being offered, if there are any that are being offered by the city to accept maintenance of, then everything's fine as far as the utilities and the street access.
Wayne, our main purpose, I'm speaking out of turn, but our purpose is to see whether or not this is the best we can do. And that's what we're going to do. We're going to analyze this at the meeting Monday night. We're going to decide whether or not this is in the best interest of the community. And if it is, we're going to approve. And if it's not, then we're not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
The zoning issues that have been raised here, I'll stand up, maybe you'll hear me a little bit better. The zoning issues that have been raised here are that property is currently, it's two parcels, one is zoned M1 and one is zoned B2. There's a question of what the appropriate zoning should be for the intended use of the property. We have a plan that has been drawn out that shows some of the intended use, but there have been some questions along the way about what, what features of that plan they have changed. That plan, I will say, was approved prior to the passage of the zoning ordinance. The layout of the lots and the configuration of utilities were all things that were decided prior to the zoning ordinance. And in fact, in this particular development, those are all features that are not governed by the zoning ordinance. The configuration of the lots as far as the sizes, the location of the structures on the lots, the type of structure with respect to manufactured home as it's defined by the ordinance versus single-family residence, again, as defined by the ordinance, as well as the ultimate use of that property are the things that are governed by the zoning ordinance. So, in this case, what we need to know is, to move the property, to consider a request to move the property from a combination of B2 and M1 into the appropriate zoning, what area of the property is going to be developed as single-family, multifamily, et cetera. Once we have those dimensions, we can, we can actually say which areas need to be rezoned to what. To that end, the R1 district would allow only single-family residences. The R3 district would allow a variety of one-family, two-family, and multifamily residences. The R3 designation is much more flexible, but it also has a higher utility requirement, a higher access requirement. It would allow all of the things that we've been discussing today, and then some, and additionally multifamily and two-family as well. But it would have a higher standard of development because you'd have to have portion utilities, you'd eventually have to have some road coming in and out of the property. But the question that's issued today is, what is the intended future use of the property? What portions of the property are going to be requested to be rezoned into those uses? And then, what is, what are the next steps for the planning commission to continue their consideration of those questions?
Okay. Wayne, Nathan, can you, can you give us that information, maybe by next Monday?
Getting there right now. I need it.
I think there were only eight lots you were proposing in that R3.
Yeah. I'm coming here.
Sure.
If I can get up, may I come up with you for this here? I'm not over here all the time. I had to stay here. I made a bunch of copies of the small time. I put them down here. Got them all. I'm going to look at it upside down. This lot, here's the lot number. Right here, lot number twenty-three, is the one that's got the house on it. And I'm going to put modular homes on lot twenty-two, lot one, twenty-nineteen, eighteen, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-seven. This is spot nine.
So, it goes up front to the curb.
Twenty-nine, that's what it can take then.
It'll take them, just this part right here.
Wayne, show us where the nursing home is.
Certain models right here, this is the retirement center.
Yeah, that's the retirement center on the other side is the nursing home.
Right.
So, you've got two lots between them.
Yeah. Modular homes. The rest of these I'm going to go.
All of these are modular homes?
Yes, that's the plan.
That's my plan. The reason I'm building those, because the round passing to build, I had some old orders. I decided to cancel three of them because we had too many problems.
Are those roads in place to get to?
Yeah, there's roads either right here.
How to get to? So, change that.
Change it up.
Change that problem.
I guess you covered the end or something, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's not a dog, it's a house with four bedrooms.
So, four individuals in separate households?
Four.
Four or more?
Yeah.
We don't typically, we don't typically get into business of defining families.
Right, I understand that. I don't put me anywhere.
Spaces between each mobile.
They're not mobile homes, they're modular.
Well, how many spaces between that one and another?
Well, this is about a two-hundred-foot lot right there. The lot, modular sixty-foot lot.
How many spaces between that one and another?
I don't know exactly. It's probably about six feet.
That's a two-hundred-foot lot.
It is a two-hundred foot. And that's about a hundred inch up there. That's a hundred feet. And there, I mean, Kaywood, Hank is engineer, and Kaywood Mill, they did this one based on code. It cost money.
So, I believe, just to kind of restate the premise here, I believe that the proposal on the table has had the section that is currently zoned B2. And additionally, lot seventeen is rezoned to R5.
That's right.
And to have the section that is zoned manufacturing to be rezoned to R1. Previously, we looked at the lot size, and they are all conforming lot sizes under the zoning ordinance. And one thing that I would caution is that it levels the standards of the National Flood Insurance Program that would apply, even if there are sections of property that are hogged and floodwaters. There are constructions, elevation, a certain number of hollows per square feet, that sort of thing. Given this information and the accuracy, obviously it's certainly great accuracy, we can accurately draw these districts on that, we can accurately present the requests.
And when you show that road extension.
Yeah, right here, right out on three.
That's where the sewer's at, next here.
Yeah, sewer's right here. The road, and the water is right over here. That would be an asset to see, yeah.
Answering a question about manufacturing business. Have you had any interest in developing that, manufacturing?
No, no. Yeah, about, about five years. And I spent a lot of money on putting the streets and doing all this stuff. It can be a wreck. Well, dog, you know what happens. But wow, I didn't care a bit either. I can't allow that shell on that.
Now, I don't think putting a bunch of hogs down there is going to be an effect.
Assets to the city.
Well, thanks about what, thanks about what you got across the street.
Right.
For me.
It's not a herd once across the street.
It's not a herd, that's what I'm saying.
Depending on what all went on, it might be a little hairy too.
Well, this is not all rental property. I own some more. I understand what you're saying.
I have a decision to make.
I'm not too old to take a few of them.
Modular homes, let's touch that along the country.
Well, they can, this is all friendly. This modular home is not.
They're on the...
That's only for...
This one is.
That's only for...
They can be set on concrete. These are on concrete. They're both off around there.
They take the railings out, huh?
They take the tombs off. But they're not, they're not manufacturing homes. It's governed by a whole lot of other codes.
So, this admits the electrical code?
Yes, sir. Reason I'm putting them right out.
Can't take no change to the kids, isn't I kidding? You have any more questions?
I'm satisfied we've got enough information.
If you need any, then call me.
Nathan, you think we got all the information we need? I am. Feels satisfied. We got all we need, Mr. Riggs?
I believe so.
Do we need to do another application? You know, that one is incorrect. I wonder if we need to do it.
Yeah, we can get a amended one that just reflects what we discussed a moment ago.
I mean, can we just change this one?
We don't care.
Don't we have to sign another one or something? Could I?
We, we meet next Monday night at six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
So, we're about to come?
I think, I didn't know I was going to do that. Yeah, I don't want to talk about that. I'm not working that whole lot. But with you here.
We appreciate you coming.
Thank you, thank for calling.
We appreciate your call.
Sure do. We'll say that we'll make it last.
Right by here, Mr. Riggs.
I made them though.
Well, I just hate for him to just say that.
Just keep him with all of that. If you don't care, I'm out.
I hope you got me that.
You have any more questions? Come in.
I think I know the difference between modular home and double-wide track.
Very late. Stay, you can stay.
Probably a little more than I can.
Oh, excuse me. I mean, they're, they're just built to different, different building codes. A manufactured home is built to the HUD code, which is federal code, and a modular home is built to local building code. So, you know, there's, there's very little difference how they're, they're produced. I mean, yeah, the codes could be, could be more latest in certain situations.
Mr. Chairman, any comments? Sir? There's also a distinction between manufactured homes and single-family homes that's founded within the definitions within the zoning ordinance. And I can read them, but it boils down to chassis and wheels. That's the difference, essentially. If, if the home or the structure is constructed with chassis and wheels, then it will fall into the category of manufactured housing. If it is not modular, site-built, built in pounds, et cetera, then it will fall into the definition of single-family.
This is not what we consider modular by the zoning.
Yeah. If I may remind you, I would have been, had been done at relevant discussion, he's got the definition right before you. Yeah. In this situation, mod versus manufactured housing, HUD house, is no different in our zoning. Is that a correct statement?
I have not seen the structure, so I do not know. Does it have, is it built on a chassis?
It is. It is built on a chassis.
Then it would be a manufactured home?
Correct.
Under the definition provided in the zoning ordinance?
Under our definition.
Yes, sir.
Not the definitions that Wayne was talking about.
That is correct.
But for our purposes, we're going to prepare one, we prepare the other. I just don't know if we're going to...
If, if the structure in question is, by, by the definition of, of the zoning ordinance, a manufactured home, then the designation for the site must obviously RMH1, which is manufactured home park, or R4, which is, allows for manufactured homes on individual lots.
That's what it is.
It's almost chassis. I mean, because these brands are all friendly mod.
And what you got is a double-wide track from the home.
Well, whatever, whatever it is, it, by our, by our zoning rules and designations, it's, it's manufactured housing.
Not modular. Which the request that we just retained would not...
That's not correct.
Would not cover that.
And he's going to need to modify his request again.
To, to R4 would seem most appropriate.
Where do you go? If he's standing outside, now would be the time to do this and not have to have another meeting over. While we're, while we're waiting on him, can he run down? Can he come back from the floor? I've got a comment and a question, too. I know there's a lot of discussion about the zoning of business property and so forth. My, my thoughts were, and I thought I was right in assuming that the men and women, whoever has business in Hamilton, they would be consulted before a change would be made. And for instance, in my case, I've had mobile home parks since, I guess...
And for instance, in my case, I've had mobile home parks since, I guess, '75, and I thought I was doing all right until I decided I wanted to use a couple of those spaces, revert from mobile home status to commercial for my grandson who wants to relocate here for commercial business. And my question is, what, when I was involved and get the piece of property that's already zoned from mobile homes, change to commercial? A detail shop, a car wash would, in my opinion, be considered a commercial operation. Now, he had a similar business in Plum Smith, and he wants to come back. So, and Bill and sold those two lots or two mobile home spaces that border Highway 78 directly across from WMTY. And they were rezoned residential. And, and that gets me back to where I first started. I looked at the map at one time, and I thought I was straight. Sure enough, it wasn't. Come to find out, those two spaces directly below my residence was part of the mobile home park, had been rezoned residential. Now, I've applied to get this thing changed to commercial for the, for the purpose of that estate. What timeframe were we talking about? And the board of the planning commission to make a decision on two lots?
Have you brought us your paperwork, what you want to do?
Yes, you have one.
It is Friday night this afternoon.
Okay. We'll meet Monday night, and we'd be glad to consider that.
Okay.
I got him a copy. Nathan's got a copy.
If, if, with your permission, it may be useful for me to run down the entire process, since I believe that's the question that has been put forward. Process of rezoning of parcel property begins with a citizen coming to town hall, reviewing the zoning map, and filling out this application here. This application, what it tries to do is capture what current zoning of the property is, and what the intended future use and appropriate zoning of that property are. Once this is complete and is on file with now Marla in the city hall office, it is presented to the planning commission. It has to be received a minimum of 14 days before the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting in order to provide the time for staff review. Now, the planning commission can, at its discretion, waive that requirement and hear that request earlier. It has done so in the past, and, and can do so, you know, with, with this request as was stated by the chairman.
I have a request for that to be waived.
Once the planning commission has heard the request, they hold their official meeting, their regularly scheduled meeting, they will forward a recommendation for against the request of rezoning to the city council, or they will request, will request additional information from the applicant, clarifications that might not be completely understood within the application itself, additional requests about the dimensions to be rezoned, for example, if only the front portion or one parcel is to be rezoned, the planning commission can request additional clarifications. When they have enough information to make a determination about what they recommend, they forward that recommendation to the city council. With that recommendation begins a public notice period that is established by state legislation that at a minimum will run 22 days, and there will be two insertions, one complete insertion in the newspaper, and one synopsis, and a period of 22 days will pass at a minimum before the city council can by law hear that request. Once that period is passed and appropriate public notice has been given, the city council receives the request and at their discretion places it on the agenda and takes action either for or against. As was stated earlier in, in the commission meeting this evening, the action of the planning commission is to make a recommendation to the council. The authority to zone property in the state of Alabama and across the nation is a legislative authority that is entirely within the discretion of the city council. Once the council has taken action, there is an additional publication requirement before that ordinance is effective. That is usually a, in a town such as Hamilton that does have a newspaper published here, it actually has to run in the paper again for an additional synopsis before it becomes effective. That entire period can take anywhere from 36 to 60 days, I would say, just depending on how much additional information is required, the publication requirements, and at what stage that application was received to appear on the agenda.
There's a fee involved, correct?
No. Yes, three, a $300 fee for each chance. I wait out for this person.
Well, I mean, just for the public to know that there's also a $300.
We didn't do that for a long time. We gave them the chance to come in and come forward.
Marla, what, when did you get that paid for?
This morning.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in the commission, I'm really glad that there was some further clarification that we needed to do, and we're, we're.
Yeah, I apologize for the confusion. We, the question was raised, I think after you left, about what the definition of a manufactured home was versus modular, single-family. In the Hamilton zoning ordinance, the definition is essentially, let me see, perfect clarity. I will even look it up, I'll make a read of it. What I said earlier was the definition is essentially built on a chassis, then it is considered a manufactured home. Page 54 of the ordinance, manufactured home, a transportable structure which exceeds either eight body feet in width or 32 body feet in length, built on a chassis and designed to be used as a dwelling with or without permanent foundation when connected to required utilities. This structure is also known as a quote "mobile home" and as a quote "house trailer," and all have the same meaning in this ordinance. So that, the interpretation of that definition is that if it is built on a chassis, whether it's one component or multiple components, that it is classified as manufactured.
That is not true. Stayed.
Wayne, before, before you get into that, let's just say that, let's just request that the change be made for manufactured housing, that'll cover that.
Okay.
And because if we do it, Wayne, we, we'd have to change the ordinance in order to do what you want.
I understand.
And it's not that, that we're arguing with the definition of the Federal Housing Act. It's just the way that's written.
Right. Well, I was saying, see, with all the, a modular home that is built on a different code than a manufacturing home.
Right.
Right, Steve?
Yes, that's correct.
But we're arguing with the definition that the state uses, and because of that, we're gonna have to modify your request.
Right.
To make it work for what you want.
That's fine. I just wanted to make that understood, you know, to everything. And we would request at this time that be made.
And an appropriate zoning designation for that request would be R4.
Right. Okay.
We're gonna change, we're gonna change your request to R4.
Yes, we do. We change it to R4.
I'm gonna change this R3 to R4.
And that do just for those lots that were requested to the R3 designation.
Right. Yep. That's fine. Again, I apologize for my confusion otherwise.
You're not, I don't want to be. I learned. I'm not the bee, I've learned.
I'm biased.
All right. We get out of here, so you should hope.
I just got one more question. What would prove made from proceeding to the hair this particular land for purpose that has to be changed to be uniform? I talked about foundation, concrete, we're gonna waive that period.
Talked about, we're gonna waive that, we're gonna discuss that Monday night.
Okay.
Can you come next Monday now?
I'll.
We leave at night at 6:00.
Six. That'd be fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Can I ask, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Because we were up there, and I was taking photos, but a lot of them may not have understood yet, the public will want to know before, when, where is this exactly as far as the, in general terms, where the location is next to the nursing home? Then, next to that is the modular or mobile home, or whatever you want to call that. That'll be there, right? One unit there.
That's correct.
Yes. And then, will his subdivision be sort of where? Will it be on the other side of that other?
It wraps around.
It wraps around that.
It wraps around the modular area.
You can have this, right?
No, no. It wraps around the nursing home.
It wraps around the assisted living.
Okay, I just for the benefit of. And this mobile home, manufactured home that he's got down there already is next to the nursing home, and there's another lot between it and the.
Assisted.
Assisted living. So there's two lots on that road, and he's gonna have to put a road between those two lots in order to get into the rest of this.
Okay.
That clarify?
That clarifies some. The other question I'd have is the, the, and I understood there is, the lawyer can tell me, but the, is there an order, a, an order that was received, received this week to prevent him from putting a unit down there? Is that still in effect?
I don't know.
Come on, think about that. You know what? Season assist, it was not a court, it was just a letter from the city. Well, it's related, so that's.
That coffee was continually.
He placed it down there before you could approve it.
Yes. He got the card ahead of the horse.
Okay, no other comments, we'll send them in. Attorney.